We will call to order the meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors for June 17, 2025. We will open this meeting with the pledge allegiance. Supervisor Lutwiler, will you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So A1 was the one off line. Read it, okay. I would like to start this meeting with presentations. A1, County Administrative Officer, California State Association of Counties CEO Graham Nowes present the CSAC Institute for Excellence in the County Government Executive Credentials to two Trinity County staff members who recently completed Leadership Program and provide a CSAC update. Good morning, Mr. Graham. How are you?
Good morning. I'm doing great. It's awesome to be here in Trinity. I am going to talk a little bit about CSAC, what we do on your behalf, and some of the issues that we are, that we're currently working on, and I'd certainly welcome any conversation with the board around that. First, want to thank Supervisor Lutwiler, who serves on our board, and Supervisor Carpenter Harris, who serves as an alternate. Really appreciate your service on behalf of Trinity. We're delighted to have, in CSAC, what is the second oldest county association in the country. And so that one day when Pennsylvania doesn't continue, then we can leapfrog them. But until then, we remain at 100, in our 130th year. So we've been around for a very long time. And that, throughout that entire time, our core focus is about advocacy. It's about ensuring that your voice is heard. It's about ensuring that every county's voice is heard, every community's voice is heard at the state level and at the federal level. And that's probably not been needed nearly as much as it is right now with so much that is happening at both the state and the federal levels. So it's ever more important. Our model is to have an executive committee that tilts urban and a board that tilts rural. And so we are a near-majority rural board, and nothing gets through without going through, we don't do anything without going through the board. And so that balance of a mostly urban executive committee and a mostly urban board is what makes us strong. Because it allows us to leverage the reality that the legislature is very urban in its focus and its representation, to leverage that while we are fighting for both urban and rural issues on behalf of counties. So that's, and I'll talk about some of those in just a second. Also want to recognize Supervisor Carpenter Harris in terms of your role with NACO as a vice chair of, one of the vice chairs for the Public Lands Committee, certainly significant here in Trinity to ensure that that voice is heard. Supervisor Lutwiler serves on the telecommunications and technology committee for NACO as well. So a lot of representation beyond your county borders to make sure that your voice is being heard. So let me talk a little bit about what we do. We have three different arms. We have our 501(c)(3) Foundation arm, which is connected to the leadership credentials that I presented before the meeting. And so there's that arm, which is the National Model for Leadership and Policy Development in the country. It also has a grants initiative, which is about partnering with counties to ensure that you have access to grants that make sense for you, and trying to meet the capacity limitations that exist mostly in a number of rural counties. And so that has functioned through our foundation. We have a business arm that has a separate board, and the business arm develops innovative service delivery and services to counties and to your residents that are cost-effective and can be a great fit for some counties. And so that, it runs the gamut from, what is a bond conduit financing, super complicated program that we put in place many, many years ago, to serving as a county's realtor. And so recently, Del Norte County issued an RFP as they don't have internal capacity to handle the disposition of their assets and properties. And so they brought the CSAC Finance Corp. on through our public square real estate business to serve as their realtor. And for us, that's a partnership with Cushman and Wakefield, that's all over the country. And so that's beginning in Del Norte. We're having conversations with Glenn and a number of other counties that do not have sufficient capacity internally in order to manage those things. So that's kind of the concept of use the leverage that, and scale that we can create where it makes sense in your county. And if it doesn't, then please keep doing what you're doing. We just want to celebrate and support you in any way that we can. On the CSAC proper side, core is advocacy, and the driver for that is to ensure that every county, every community has the resources, the authority, and the flexibility to do things in a way that makes sense to them. And that is different in Trinity than it is in Sacramento, or Merced, or LA, or Humboldt. And it's different, as it should be. Your community is different. What's most important to you is different. The relationships and infrastructure you have here are also different, and we want to celebrate that and ensure that you have the right support to be able to navigate through that. That is often a very, very difficult challenge, given the climate in Sacramento and in Washington DC, where too often it is a one-size-fits-all, which we would argue is one-size-fitsnone, and not a good way to do business. And so a lot of our energy is in that space to ensure that there's sufficient flexibility locally. That is more relevant in rural counties than it is in other places because of scale, and that is a core driver. As a guy that grew up in Humboldt County, it resonates very closely to me in my own personal experience going, going through my youth. Right now, we're at an interesting point in the state legislative process. The governor proposed a revision to his budget in May. The legislature, this past Friday, adopted what was a two-party agreement between the Senate and the Assembly. That now goes to the governor, and the question is whether that's actually the real budget or not. And what I mean by that is that there is, the legislature faces a constitutional deadline of June 15th in order to pass a budget. And if they don't, things shut down. They cannot do any other business besides work on the budget. Folks no longer get paid. And what was approved was not a three-party agreement that included negotiations with the governor, but rather the two houses identifying their own priorities, which are somewhat different. And so they now have between now and June 30th to finalize that and to work that through with the governor. And so that process is occurring now. And so it may mean that the budget that has been adopted will be signed, and there'll be no other budget-related activity that occurs for some period of time. Or it could mean that there are some amendments to that that deal with final negotiations between the two houses and the governor. So what we are focused on in that process are a few things. First, Proposition 36. The voters overwhelmingly adopted, approved Proposition 36 in November of last year. That changes what the tools are around criminal justice, particularly around retail theft, felonies, and the potential for treatment for those that may need it for substance use-related issues. So wherever folks may have been on whether that was the right thing or the wrong thing, the public was crystal clear that it is something that should be put in place. And so as counties, as the primary service provider for the state of California, the job now is to implement it. And that can't be done for free. There are impacts to probation. There are impacts to your public defender, to your DA, to your behavioral health. And so we are pushing to ensure that there's sufficient funding in order to carry out what the voters have made very clear needs to be done. So that's a core area of focus for us in the state budget. What is currently on the table is more than zero. It is not enough to appropriately implement it. So there's more work to be done in that space. So we're, that's a core part of what we are pushing for. Next is around homelessness and some housing-related issues, and wanting to ensure that dollars that go to counties are as flexible as possible and that the state investment doesn't get immediately cut off. Housing and homelessness are just like other issues, which is if the investment goes away, so too does the progress. You cannot implement any policy for free. And so if the dollars aren't there, the expectation shouldn't be there either. And so we're having those conversations with the legislature and the governor's office to ensure that resources continue to flow in that space and are aligned with what the expectations are in communities around what you can accomplish. We're also heavily involved in disaster-related policy and some fiscal asks associated with that. We have a comprehensive disaster proposal that touches on a lot of prevention portions, immediate response, and what may occur in terms of rebuilding in communities. And what we've learned from wildfires and other disasters here and in a number of other counties over the past eight years is that there are substantial improvements that can be made and that should be made, and that without them, there are significant barriers to actually making progress in your community. And so one example of that is when a community faces a significant disaster, flood, fire, whatever it may be, there's, in order for your impacted homeowners and businesses to get a property tax exemption that requires a state action, in order for the county to be backfilled for that so that you can continue to provide services, that requires a state action. In order for you to get expedited permitting and removal of debris, that requires an ex, state action. And we believe all those things should happen, and a bunch of other things should happen automatically. If you have a disaster in your community, you should not need to spend your time fighting to ensure that your community has what every community should have. And so we've been pushing that very hard. We've particularly been elevating that conversation in light of the wildfires in Los Angeles because there is now a significant portion of the legislature that has experienced basically the same thing that you and many other northern communities have for a long time. And so there's much greater attention to what may be needed. And so we're trying to leverage that to ensure that whatever changes are put in place are put in place for every community that's been impacted. And I'm going to, I'm going to add one, final one related to disasters. And it's a particularly acute one, I think, here in Trinity, which is the threshold for lost houses as it relates to FEMA eligibility. The way it currently works is you must hit a number threshold, not a percentage threshold, of lost homes in order to have access to FEMA, FEMA resources and assistance. And we believe that should actually be structured where it's either that number or it's a certain percentage of your overall housing stock. And that's hugely relevant here. You've had a couple of substantial wildfires that have impacted, say, 1% of your housing stock, and yet still FEMA doesn't step in. And that needs to be addressed. And there's a, there's a huge federal component to that that we are working on primarily through NACO, which has created an intergovernmental task force on disasters and is at the table for some of the FEMA reform, so that that is part of the solution. And that communities like Trinity and others that are at a smaller scale have the same access to resources as other communities do. So that's a really significant component. And much credit to this board and your colleagues in other counties, other rural counties, because it's due to your bringing awareness to us and pushing that that's part of, these things are part of our overall proposal. Not too long ago, we held a regional meeting in Butte County with a number of folks and walked through what a disaster proposal may look like, and it got a lot better by having representation from a variety of rural communities where these significant issues were raised. And so it's, we're continuing to push on that. There are resources that are relevant in a disaster space as well. It's a way smarter investment to do things on the front end where we don't end up having a substantial wildfire than there are to wait and then respond once there's a horrendous disaster. So we're trying to push the state towards more of those upfront investments as well as they're better for all of us. The, the final thing I'll reference is not about policy, but just about reality, which is people get their news differently today than they used to. And the way in which the state and the federal government function is different than what it used to be, and the ability to get your voices heard in a community is harder than it used to be, and we are attempting to try to address that in, in some manner. And so we are much more active, sometimes with sharp elbows, but we are much more active in trying to ensure that communities of every size have their voices heard. And that often means showing up to spaces where it's, whether it's outside of a press conference room for a major state budget-related announcement, and then we can grab the media right there, or it's being proactive in getting into a number of different media publications around what's most important to local communities. And so it's trying to elevate the voice of communities and to do it in partnership with you and other counties across California. And I believe on a going-forward basis, we will need to do more and more and more of that because it's harder and harder to get, to really get the narrative of what is occurring in communities out there, because there's just so much noise moving in a whole multitude, multitude of directions. So that's a new area for us, and it's certainly not one we sought out, but it is necessary in order to adapt to what is a changing political climate at the state and federal level. So why don't I stop there and happy to entertain any questions, comments, or course corrections from the board as may deem, as you may deem necessary.
I don't have specific questions. I just want to say a real resounding voice of gratitude for what you do in support of our rural counties. And I do appreciate the understanding that you provided as to how you leverage your urban and rural. I've had a little bit of a, an impression that CSAC might lean a bit more urban and that we need to lean on solely RCRC for our rural needs. And while they are a wonderful advocate, I do see a partnership, certainly between the two, a very strong one. But I didn't realize the very strategic way in which you leverage your executive board and your, and your governing board together in that way. So I also, you know, not in specific things to point out at this moment, but it's very clear that you are very strategic about everything that you do, and I appreciate just that level of foresight and real intentionality with which you advocate for our needs. So thank you, and thanks for being here today. Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it. We have a very close relationship with RCRC. Pat Blocklock, my counterpart there, and I spend a lot of time together and share information, and we're often at the same table together to ensure that two organizations, which have the same goal, which is to elevate communities and ensure counties have what they need in order to meet their residents' needs, are standing together arm in arm. That's the best way to, for all of us to support you in those overall efforts. And it is true that we try to have a priority that is primarily rural, one that is primarily urban, and if there's a third, then it's one that impacts everyone. And this year, disasters are not entirely rural, but they have been more rural for a long time. And so we're certainly in that space. Homelessness, which is primarily urban, is a significant element there. And then if you're going to be told to do something, you need to be funded to do it. And that is universal. And so that's been really helpful to try to ensure that we're holding the county family together, and the needs that are most relevant in Trinity are being represented through that process. It's really important. Broadband is probably, I didn't mention broadband, but it's a really substantial area of focus. And when we were successful with our partners at RCRC and a whole bunch of other folks in, in having a coalition, very broad-based coalition that was created and successful around broadband, where there was a $6.5 billion appropriation of dollars for broadband, it occurred because it, it became relevant in urban communities where the votes are in the legislature. And so for years, we had all been working very hard to make what was incremental progress on broadband, but not enough. And not enough because 2/3 of the legislature does not come from a rural area. And so when it became an urban issue also, it allowed that leveraging together of what are common interests to ensure that the legislature was there. And so it's that kind of partnership that is necessary in order to make progress on a number of things. And whatever it takes, we're ready to do it on your behalf. So thank you for your participation with us, with our friends at RCRC, and on behalf of your community. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, just two, two things on that. First, on this last one, I will say I reached out to Graham at one point because I did have some concerns about where the rural needs were being reflected as well as they could be in some of our work. And some of that was coming out of some of the legislative conference discussions. Sorry, where we were hearing from state policymakers. And I remember one was about transportation, and, you know, I made the point that at the time we're sitting in LA where there were, say, 500 people per square mile, and we have five people per square mile, and yet we had the same standards. And so I was using that as an example. And so I reached out to Graham to say, "How are we getting these kind of rural differences reflected?" And so to Graham's credit, he arranged for a meeting at the next time we all got together for him and the current president at the time, and me to just sit and have a deeper dive discussion. And Graham mentioned kind of what he was just referring to, this example of, you know, absolutely, the, there is a strategic way of trying to balance out the needs and make sure the rural needs are reflected, and sometimes you are having to bend a little to leverage the legislative power of the urban locations to get through. And so it, it was, as you said Supervisor Cox, a strategic approach, and it helped me better understand how, as our representative on that board, I can try to make sure that that bending still reflects what's important to us. And then the other thing I was going to ask is if you would make a comment about, you were talking just before that about the communication engagement, and I can't remember the name of the program, but I know there was outreach to us about being, signing up to be your public advocates that you could, your team could call on when they needed someone to come speak on behalf of our policies and positions and so forth. And I can't remember the name of it, but I know I raised my hand, but that's really not just to the board members of CSAC. It's any supervisor that would want to step, or a CAO, or whomever. So if you could spend just a minute or two describing that program, if it's ringing a bell to you?
I can't articulate the name.
I can't either.
But that's just because I'm old. Or because I have three teenage daughters, which makes, which is both magical and sometimes challenging. We're, you're fortunate in that, and I'm fortunate, in that the team of folks at CSAC are policy experts in a number of different areas. And that's, that's true with our advocacy team, but it's also true on the business side with our finance corporation, and it's true for education and leadership trading on the foundation side. And we want to be helpful partners. And so where it makes sense for, for us to be present and to assist in your community, we want to, we want to be there to do exactly that. We may also move in the other direction, which is if there's something that's really important to you, we do have a, a, I'm going to mess up the...
Speakers Bureau?
Something Speakers Bureau. Thank you Supervisor Lutwiler. We do have a Speakers Bureau, which actually moves in the other direction, which is if there's an area that you have a significant passion for, you have an expertise in, then that's helpful for us to know, because then when we're, when there's a media reach out or there's a, there's a bill that we need to testify on, whether it's in support or opposition, that we can have someone who actually lives that locally in the community as opposed to folks that live and breathe in the Sacramento political culture. And so that is, that is growing in its, in its footprint. We've used it a couple of times. This is new this year. We've used it a couple of times, and we're going to be using it more and more and more. And the reason why is because we represent you, but you actually understand your community. And so we can learn from you, but it's always way more effective when those who are elected locally to represent their communities are the voice that is being used. And that's true in Sacramento related to bills. It's true with the media. It's true in so many different forums, and we want to use that to the greatest degree possible. And as you mentioned Supervisor Lutwiler, that is not limited to whom may serve on our board. It's limited to who may serve in their community. And so clearly, the three of you do that, as do your other colleagues. And so if there's something that's of interest, and I'm happy to follow up with, with your CAO in terms of what that opportunity might look like, and just encourage you, if there's something that comes up and it seems like we should be aware, but maybe we're not, or the direction that it appears may not perfectly line up, please reach out to me. That's helpful for us to hear so that we can ensure that your voice is being heard.
And I'll just clarify, so the, the ask is, are you interested and willing? And then what areas specifically? And that way, then land use, whatever it might be, tribal matters, you know, they can, they can know, oh, okay, let's tap that person because we have this media opportunity or this legislative meeting or whatever. So I just wanted to make sure mine was not the only voice that was potentially being elevated.
And I would just say, just to our public that's watching, just as a matter of sort of testimony, I had opportunity a number of months ago to, to provide testimony before a Senate Subcommittee on a particular item that was of interest to us. And I really appreciated, was fascinated by how much it does move the needle when those that are being impacted, and it was, it was a very small amount of time that you are afforded, but your message can be very clear and very, you're careful for potency when you write those words. But I could watch the faces of those Assembly members that were there in attendance, and I could feel the difference in the room when you're the one experiencing it and you're bringing that voice forward. So again, I think that this is something that's, you know, been real, been being done. But again, this is an example of your intentionality toward really stacking our deck, so to speak, so that when they come to the forefront, we're ready and poised to move forward. So thanks.
Welcome.
Yeah.
I always, I just say, I should never say the last thing, but the last thing that comes to mind at the moment is again to thank you on behalf of Paul Dancheck, who helped us last year work on a board effectiveness survey process. So he leveraged some of his knowledge to help us come up with a way for us to be self-reflecting about our effectiveness as board members and chair and so forth. And that was a very valuable contribution on behalf of CSAC to us. And as you've alluded to, we didn't have the resources to necessarily come up with that ourselves as, with as much polish and professionalism as what he was able to bring to that. So another great example, and just wanted to pass along that appreciation again.
Thank you. You're welcome. Paul Dancheck serves as the Chief Operating Officer for our foundation, which houses all of our executive education, and he used... And he used to do that for USC. And so it's nice for us to have been able to steal him and for him to bring a lot of that breadth of knowledge and expertise to us. He's also the past president of the National American Society of Public Administration. So is, has a very big footprint across the country, which we are leveraging as well. So yeah, thank you for the comments there.
I'm done. Yeah, I think so.
I just want to kind of just ask you about this, but also just bring attention to the fact that it is through organizations like CSAC and RCRC that we are able to leverage a conglomerate of voices around the homeowner's insurance issues that we're all facing. And I know that CSAC and the representatives from the counties have, have done a good bit of work with that. Can you just, just briefly, mostly for the public that's listening, so that folks understand it's not just us against Goliath, but it's a whole bunch of us together? Can you give just a quick update on, on how we are moving things in the homeowner's insurance world? And, and how CSAC supports the communities when, when you go in to have those conversations?
It's, thank you for raising this issue. It's really interesting because counties are not in the insurance business. But if your businesses and homeowners cannot get insurance, you are very quickly in touch with insurance because it can shut down your community very, very quickly. And it's why, when I have, have had conversations with the California Building Industry Association, it's their number one priority, insurance. Because if you can't get insurance, then you can't build. Or you can't rebuild. I mean, there's all sorts of challenges around that. So we've had, we've had an insurance working group that's been focusing on what some of the challenges are. I know Supervisor Lou Weiler has done some specific work here in Trinity on this issue as well. We've had a number of conversations with the Insurance Commissioner and others around this to ensure that there's a greater structure that is put in place. We've been involved in some of the fair plan efforts to, I was going to call it a remodel, not to remodel it, but to upgrade it in a way that is more, that's more responsive. And we've begun to reach out to other states that are actually further along this challenge than we are. States like Louisiana, Florida, North Carolina. We spent some time with North Carolina County Leadership last week. So we invited them out and they were sharing some of their challenges around insurance. And what we've learned is we are not in front on this issue. Other states, primarily hurricane-related states, have been dealing with this for much longer than we have. And so the good news is there are things that we can learn from how they've put their, how they've been able to keep in a viable insurance market in their state and not drive homeowners and businesses out. And so we are, we're trying to take stock of, of all that. They don't all have a fair plan equivalent. And those that have one, like Florida, for example, it is very, very different than what we have in California. The cost is dramatically higher in Florida. And the coverage you get is also much higher. And I'm not sure that's the best model, but it is a model that they've figured out how to make work in Florida. So we're trying to learn from all of that and at least equip you and others with what we have learned that might be of value. And, but it is one of those strange issues where we don't have legislative platform on how we should engage in insurance other than if it doesn't exist in a way that is sustainable, then community shut down and that's not okay. And so it's a really hard place to go because we don't necessarily have a policy solution to it. But a policy solution must be put in place and it must ensure that we don't have a fleeing of insurance companies. And we don't have rates that make it so it's impossible to be a homeowner or to operate a business. Something, there has to be some balance in between those two things that allows communities to continue to move forward. And it's gotten increasingly more difficult to do so. But it's, so we're continuing to do some work in that space. We learned from that, some of the conversations that you have locally and some of your experiences, that's helpful. And we want to continue to push on the Insurance Commissioner, on the legislature wherever we can to try to shake this loose in a way that preserves, preserves insurance primarily in that wildland urban interface, which I'm not sure there's an urban interface here, but there's a lot of wildland and there's a lot of, I just think about those fire maps and some of the challenges around those, which can upend insurance very, very quickly, even in areas that may not be nearly at risk as what someone may suggest that they are. So it's a, that's not a, here's the answer because I don't know it. But we continue to, to work on this issue to try to protect communities.
And I thank you for that. I, I know it's a hardship for so many people. Houses fall out of escrow because of, of the cost of insurances, in some cases greater than the loan payment. So it's definitely something that matters to the people. Are there any further questions or comments from the board?
I did think of one other thing that Graham had mentioned.
Mr. Lou Weiler has thought of one more item.
How unusual for me. But I think that you might want to hear from him about CSAC's ongoing efforts on behalf of counties regarding the carry of last resort.
Oh, yes, this is a good one. Please.
There is currently a bill in the legislature, AB 470. It's sponsored by AT&amp;T. And that bill would relieve them of carry of last resort responsibilities in a number of places. We, along with RCRC, have been working around the, literally around the clock on this issue to ensure that there is no carrier of last resort relief without first ensuring there's no question that there's going to be connectivity in a community. And Trinity, like many other rural counties and actually a number of rural areas in urban counties, face significant issues if the carrier of last resort responsibilities go away. And so we, along with RCRC and a host of other folks, have been opposed to that and want to ensure that to the degree that there's any relief, whether it happens through the legislature or it happens through the California Public Utilities Commission, that any relief that occurs only occurs after a community is going to be what you would deem as well-served, where there's not a question. And so it is true that it may cost hundreds of thousands of dollars on one parcel in order to do something, like put in fiber for that, for that property in order to have high-speed access and reliability. And it's also true that if that's not there, there should be no relief in any carrier of last resort responsibility. Because it is not acceptable in, in 2025 for there to be no guaranteed option to be able to make a phone call. That is so basic. And so we've done a ton of work in this space. And RCRC has done a ton of work in this space. We remain closely connected. And our advocacy is right in this space of, there shall be no relief. I mean, we don't declare what the law is in California. Sometimes I think we'd like to. But there shall be no relief that we would ever support that doesn't include a guarantee and a firm commitment to put in with a very short timeline, an alternative that is reliable on a going-forward basis. And so that's hard. I mean, it doesn't seem hard to us. It seems pretty basic to us. But the dynamic in the legislature is, has made it very difficult politically. So the good news is the bill is not currently moving and is stuck in the Assembly. And so that doesn't mean it's going away or that the venue doesn't shift from the legislature to the Public Utilities Commission. But our advocacy should never go away on this issue. And this is one where it is, it has been supervisors talking directly to the PUC and to legislators and to others that have made the greatest impact to ensure that there is not relief in communities where there's not really an alternative option. And our president, Supervisor Jeff Griffiths from Inyo County knows this well because much like Trinity, there's large portions of his county that have no alternative. And so if there's no alternative, then nothing should occur. Keep, keep the status quo until there's an improvement that could be made and that we don't end up back in the 1850s, which makes no sense whatsoever. So thank you for raising that issue. It's Supervisor Lou Weiler, it's a really important one.
Promise I'm done.
Now that we've concluded with board questions, is there any final words that you would like to leave us with?
Just thank you. Thank you for what you do for your community. Thank you to your CAO Trent Tuthill. And thank you to the entire Trinity County staff. Public service is hard. It's harder today than it was five years ago than it was 15 years ago. And it is desperately needed in a really positive and stable way. And you all are doing that in your communities. And so as a, as a citizen, as someone that lives in an unincorporated area, so I don't know what a city is. As someone that lives in an unincorporated area where all services that I receive are connected to the county, in my case, County Sacramento, but have a very strong appreciation for the work that is done on behalf of the public every single day. It's a choice and it's one that should be celebrated as much as possible. And Trinity County has a lot of remarkable and talented individuals throughout this county. And those that take that and also invest it back into their community through service, just want to really applaud them because that's what makes a community, that's what helps hold it together. So thanks for the opportunity to hang out amidst the beautiful forest. I really appreciate it.
Well, we thank you for making the drive up here and appreciate it. And we hope you have a good journey back.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We will now move forward with Item B, public comment. This is, this time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When answering the board, please state your name. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer to the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Do we have any public comment in the room? Seeing none, do we have any online?
I show no raised hands.
There are no raised hands online. We will conclude public comment and we will move to our reports announcements. Do we have any reports from department heads in the room or online? Seeing none, for the public's information, we receive many of those through email so that we are kept aboard of what is going on within the county departments. We move to Item C2, report from County Administrative Officer, CAO Tuthill.
Thank you, Jared. A few items. I'd like to start off with a quality of service recognition. This is to our clerk, recorder, assessor office. I think they hand these out to certain people. No, I'm just kidding. They provide some great service down there and they get a lot of these. But I do really like to recognize each one because somebody's taken the time to fill it out. And I think it deserves recognition to the employees in that great department. And, you know, each of the blocks are checked as far as, you know, how do you rate the treatment you received? Very good. Individual is very helpful. The overall experience was very good. And this was a nice one because in the comment section, you know, they took the time to write out, you know, professional. So I'd just like to, you know, recognize that department for their continued efforts as they interact with the public on a very, very routine basis. And oftentimes, the individual is coming in with some questions and may not always be in the, 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 the most enjoyable frame of mind. The next topic is the, just like to remind the board and anybody who's, happens to be online that we're having our public, our employee recognition picnic tomorrow on the 18th at Loudoun Park. The information's been sent out, sent out on that. But I'd like to, you know, publicly thank the department heads for putting on that event and for their continued support. Yesterday, I attended an RCRC-led jail medical services regional working group. This was the initial, initial meeting for the Northern Region area. That included RCRC Prism, Trinity County CAO, Del Norte County CAO, Humboldt County CAO, Modoc County CAO, and Shasta. Their CAO was not there, but they are part of the, the group. We talked about the three basic methods that this concept has been talked. And that those three basic methods of providing medical services to any detention facility are, you know, in-house, which is the way we do it, and just very few, very few counties do it that way. And then there is the contract, third-party methodology, which a lot of the counties do. And then there's kind of a newer concept that this group has come up with, was a potential JPA concept where there would be these regions established. But to flush this all out, there needs to be a consultant services brought in to perform, to perform some evaluations on that regional concept. So the group decided to ask RCRC or really to concur with RCRC moving forward on drafting up an RFP and what that scope would look like. And that RFP, those of the, will be similar to all the five regions. The other four regions have, have already decided to move forward. And we were the fifth to do that. So we're going to move forward in this regard. This is a long-term effort. You know, this is probably a multi-year type effort to determine, you know, how and what methodology and options are out there to provide the, the best medical services in our jail that, that we can afford. So looking at that, that's a good positive step in the right direction. I've been in close coordination with the sheriff's office and our HHSA organization on that topic. There was countywide EOC, so the Emergency Wide, Emergency Operations Center training on June 9th. Just like to thank all the departments and staff who participated in that just to make sure that the facility and equipment is, is functioning and ready. And then the personnel are, are trained appropriately and aware of the processes and procedures. So that is an ongoing effort. And I'd also like to thank everyone for their participation in the general plan update, the study sessions we had last week, and then the first zoning code discussions that took place at the Planning Commission meeting. So, and I also like just to encourage everyone to familiarize yourselves with the documents that are available online and that have been available online for quite some time now regarding the, the general plan, the community plan, the, the zoning, draft zoning documents that are available to the, the planning commissioners and that kind of stuff. So lots of information's out there. There's going to be numerous engagement sessions, numerous opportunities to, to discuss this in, in public forums over the next six months. But it is a heavy lift. We've been talking about this for quite some time as far as this, this, the time period that we are in now and that there will be lots of opportunities for engagement and participation. But, you know, we are moving forward with the, the plan as scheduled. And just ask for everybody's engagement with that and, and preparation prior to the meetings. And that's all I've got for now.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have a question regarding the update from CAO Tuthill?
I do not.
We will now remove, move to Items C3, reports from members of the board of supervisors. Supervisor Cox, will you please begin?
So I did attend recently, first of all, no out-of-county travel. Do I have to report? The NorCal EMS JPA. So that was a, we are still in transition from our, our standing as a nonprofit over to a JPA. I want to commend that executive staff and our executive director. It's been a very heavy lift, very needed to move us forward in order for them to be able to get Department of Justice reports. And the barriers that keep popping up are many and surprising. And they just continue to move forward. So I really appreciate their efforts and their tenacity. The fire chiefs meeting was canceled on Monday due to all of the weather in the area with lightning strikes all over the place. So, it didn't make sense to pull all our fire chiefs and put them together in a room in one location in Weaverville where they needed to be out in their fields. So... I did, however, attend the Weaverville Volunteer Fire Department Appreciation Event and want to really acknowledge, it really stems on the heels of something that Graham just pointed out, and that is, it is our committed, dedicated members of our community countywide that make our county what it is. And to have an evening to focus on these volunteers that spend hours and hours training, spend hours on call, hours of semi-sleepless nights because your pager could go off at any time, and when it does, you're quickly in your boots and in your vehicle responding. And what you encounter may give you another multitude of semi-sleepless nights. And so, lovely to spend an evening recounting each individual, the number of responses, and the, the just overwhelming love that is expressed in your, to your community for what you're willing to give of yourself in that very, very selfless manner. So, thank you to each of them. I was not able to attend the P S A two meeting this Monday due to a personal matter, but it was our meeting where we admire, acknowledged the participation of each of our advisory council members. I'll let Supervisor Lutwiler expound on how that went, but I did, as chair of that executive board, create some certificates that went out to each of those members, and with that, I thoughtfully did a little hunting on what could I find that would express my gratitude in a way that might commemorate their service over the past year. And I came up with a quote that I would share with all of us from Winston Churchill that says, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." We have many, many people over, again, all of the various areas. This is just one. These people spend their efforts bringing forward those things on the ground that they see that would benefit or better benefit our aging population, and I certainly thank each one of them. That is the end of my report. Thank you.
Yes. Let's see. Sierra Nevada Conservancy Board Meeting took place on June 3rd and 4th in Modoc County. It's my first time there and second time as a, our voting member representative on that board. It was encouraging that we were awarding some new grants or approving some new grants that are going out now for both recreation and for fuels management. And one of the things on the fuels management part is that we are trying to take advantage of the fact that we have this short window where the state, in response to the fires in L.A., have created a very streamlined approach to getting projects approved. And so, a bunch of that money is to be awarded very quickly, and the work has to be completed very quickly because that's how it falls within that window. So, it was great to see some of the money that was recently awarded to the Conservancy very quickly turned around in grant opportunities. California Jobs First Outdoor Recreation and Tourism Meeting. I participated in that on June 6th. This is a group that is meeting to discuss some of the funding that's been awarded from, in that arena. And so, it was good to hear what people are working on, on that behalf. And Nick Goulet with our Watershed Center is another person who participates in those meetings. Nortech, the Workforce Development Group. I'm now chairing the special, all right, I chaired the Special Executive Committee Meeting that has to do with replacing our executive director who's retiring. That took place on June 9th, but was virtual, so I didn't have to travel for that. The General Plan and Community Plan Joint Sessions that C A O Tuhill mentioned. We had a meeting with Civitas regarding the Tourism Investment District, and I'll give an update on that later in the agenda. And then, as Supervisor Cox mentioned, the P S A two Board and Advisory Council Collaborative Meeting took place yesterday, and the certificates were very well received. It was, you know, it was, you could tell, people felt that that was a very special recognition of what they're doing. So, thank you for that. And the updates included a lot of activities that are going on. It was quite impressive when the advisory council was presenting their information about the work that they do, and they took the time to estimate the number of hours that was included by each one of those efforts. And it's a huge amount of volunteer time that these folks put forward on behalf of the area agency for aging. That's it.
Thank you. As did other supervisors, we had our special meeting for the general plan that took place on the 10th and the 11th. We had two days in-house here. I was not able to attend my rule caucus meeting with N A C O because it was during the meeting on the 11th. And then, our public lands meeting that was scheduled for the N A C O Public Lands Caucus was on the 12th, and it was canceled due to an extension in one of the timelines. They wanted to give people an opportunity to finish that. So, I had no out-of-county travel, and I do just want to say congratulations to all of our Trinity County graduates, whether they graduated from pre-K and get to go into kindergarten, or whether they're going from eighth grade into high school, or whether they've made the big leap from high school out into the world. I had the opportunity to get some fantastic invitations in the mail and be part of that gift-giving buying spree that we all go on this time of year. But there's just nothing more, I think, valuable in our community than celebrating the successes of our young people. So, congratulations, class of 2025.
Chair, before you go on, if I could, there were two items I did want to bring up, not so much as a part of my board report out, but as a part of publicly wanting to open a conversation. I considered whether or not today was a great day since we are missing two of our board members, but I think at least to put it into the airspace, and then maybe we can decide, you know, at a future point. One of them is that about last year at this time, Supervisor Lutwiler, in his role as chair, created and extended to all of us a survey that we completed that gave him some feedback as far as the efficacy and efficiencies surrounding his role in that capacity. And I'm, I felt that that was really proactive and very selfless, that he would create that and put that forward. And I'm wondering if that's something that will just fall off the radar or if that's something that we will pick up and move forward. You know, I did have this conversation with C A O Tuhill offline, who said, "It's not his role," which is true. It's, this would be our role, our discussion and decision as to whether that's something that we found value in and want to move forward. So, food for thought.
I agree that that's a good method to really be able to, feedback is a gift. And so, having that is a powerful tool.
And County Council, just to make sure we're okay, I think, obviously not an agendized item, but we, this is something that we're bringing up and could give direction to staff to pursue based on three of us. Is that correct? Okay. Because my understanding is that when we did that, we actually did, I have to go back and look at our notes, but we did say that we thought it should be implemented every year at midterm unless it was determined it should be done in a different timing. So, I think, I think the intention at that point was for it to be done in an annual thing until the board says, "Hey, we don't want to do this." So, if we're all feeling like it should move forward, then I think we could give that direction to staff to go ahead and initiate the process, it sounds like.
Then initiate the process.
The other sort of topic I wanted to perhaps bring before you, and maybe there will be directions to staff, or maybe there will be this conversation in the future, has to do with our local elections. We cannot, at this time, because of, you know, a governor mandate, do counting differently than we do it now. But I think that we could say that we would like our polling places returned rather than having our drop-off boxes. I am getting a lot of feedback that people do not feel comfortable putting their ballot in a box that then sits with no lighting, no cameras, no whatever. Even if there could be that, they want to go to a polling place and drop off their ballot. So, I am opening that for conversation. I don't know if that's appropriate at this time or, again, going forward, but I do want us to have that conversation and see where we might land.
I would like to add my voice to that. It is truly one of the most common post office requests when I'm going to get mail or just out in town, especially as you move closer to election years. People often say, "Can we please have our polling places back?" That is something maybe we can agendize and have a presentation from elections and see where, where we are and how we could move forward with that potentially.
Supervisor Carpenter is not on the subject at all, but can you use your mic a little bit better, please?
I apologize.
Well, in the sense of direction to staff, I certainly support that we ask for maybe an agenda item where the elections, people could come forward and present, and, but they understand what we're raising as concerns and desires represented by our constituents and see what they have to say.
Thank you. That's all I had. Yes, thank you for that.
In terms of items that we may need to explore as an agenda item perhaps, or maybe we can just have an policy update or something, one of, Suzie's going to laugh at me when I say this, but one of the problems that we have when we're reporting our travel is that a lot of organizations only give electronic receipts. And in order to be able to submit those, we have to print them out. But because they're a text in a lot of cases, when it comes from like transportation, like Uber or what have you, we have to fill out the forms that say we don't have a viable receipt. And then, you end up with stacks of these no-reseat documents. And it's something that we may need to look at countywide for when we do travel, that, that many, many organizations, especially around transportation and things like that, are only issuing text receipts now. So, I don't know how we would address that or how we can have a conversation about it, but it may be something to consider.
We can look into that and absolutely look at revising our policy with the new technology. But in the interim, if you take a picture of your text receipt, it would qualify as a receipt.
Okay. Thank you.
Current county policy established by the auditor's office requires that if you don't have an original receipt, that we have to do the incomplete records form. And that's the form that Heidi's, I believe, referring to.
Yes, correct.
So, you can take a picture. We can print, you can do a screenshot and print that out, but it's not an original receipt. And so, then she, we have to do the additional form to indicate that it's not an original receipt and why they weren't able to obtain an original receipt.
I would disagree on the definition of original receipt, but we can, let's work on this. Let us work on this.
With our auditor.
I did tell my wife just this morning, as I was preparing my pass due reporting, that I think I spent more on the ink and paper or the forms associated with the $4.48 parking expense from a system that doesn't give a receipt. So, yeah, it would be great for us to revisit it.
And probably really nice for Suzie too, who has to process all those no-viable receipt documents. So, we'd be saving some staff time perhaps if that was our new.
Now, we'll move on to item C four, reports from ad hocs, homeless encampment. Supervisor Lutwiler or C A O Tuhill?
Thank you, Chair. So, the homeless encampment ad hoc update is as follows. So, on June 23rd, that'll be the next multi-organizational camp walk is scheduled. And I just want to make sure that, you know, everybody's understanding that when we do these camp walks, the focus is on making sure everybody we come in contact with is made aware of those services that are available to them and that they understand the process to get those services. And we have had some individuals who have been interested in that, but this is on a voluntary basis. The individual, you know, must be willing to engage in that conversation and meet those criterias to receive those services. Also, the proposed ordinance, which is entitled Encampments on Public Property, is on the agenda for board consideration later in the, on the agenda. And then, the next ad hoc meeting is scheduled for June 23rd in the afternoon, and where we will discuss, part of the discussion will be on, you know, the future of the ad hoc, what role we want to take depending upon what the decision of the board is today regarding the ordinance. And then, we should be prepared to make a recommendation to the board chair on the ad hoc future. And that's all I've got for now.
Thank you. We will now move to item D, the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters, and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board of supervisor, a member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do we have any public comment in the room? Do we have any public comment online?
I show no raised hands.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to pull an item on the board?
I need to pull item D seven, please.
We will be pulling item D seven upon request of Supervisor Cox. Any other items wish to be pulled by staff or board?
Chair, I would just like to make a comment on D 12. There are a couple administrative items that were brought to our attention. Need to remove and is and change, and some numbers need to add up appropriately from 318 to 308. So, we're good, we recognize those admin changes need to be made on item D 12, and we'll make those before it's published.
The board is fine with that, moving forward with that? Okay. Do I have any, a motion from the board?
We need the, comment first. Well, we did that. Nevermind, sorry. So, I'll make a motion to approve all items other than D seven as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No discussion? We'll move to the vote. Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
We will now look at item number D seven. Board of Supervisors authorized the chairman to sign a letter to Senator Weiner and Assembly Member Gabriel supporting the Wildfire County Coordinators Program. Supervisor Cox has pulled this.
It's just a small change that we need to make to this letter. The practicality surrounding this was described very well by Graham Canous when he was talking, you know, at the CSEC level and talking about what's going on with the state budget right now. So, the ask in this letter, you know, addresses the Senate and the Assembly who have, this past Friday, passed this. But it moves now and sits on the governor's table for discussion about what items then will be, you know, pulled off in order to meet the budget deficit that's there now. So, it has occurred, post bringing this to the agenda, that the C C at the bottom, this letter should, as it's going to Pro Tem McGuire, should likely also go to Assembly Member Rogers and also to Governor Newsom. So, with that one change, I would ask that we now vote on that, with that addition.
Do we have any public comment on this? Any on Zoom?
I show no raised hands.
I will hear a motion.
So, I would move that we So I would move that we send this letter to the two individuals stated and then just amend the CC to include Assemblymember Rogers and Governor Newsom.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? We will now hear for a vote. Supervisor Littwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris? Aye. We will now move to item E, public hearings. E1, Trinity County Transportation Commission conducted public hearing to receive comments on unmet transit needs as required by the Transportation Development Act. No fiscal impact. Who's presenting?
Sarah?
Should be online.
Do we have our presenter?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Turn it up a little bit. Go ahead.
Hi, Sarah Saad, Transportation Planner for the Commission. So the public hearing today is required by the Transportation Development Act. Comments submitted during today's hearing, along with all other input received throughout the unmet transit needs process, is going to be reviewed and analyzed. A final recommendation will be presented to the board to determine whether the identified unmet transit needs are reasonable to meet. This will most likely be at the next board meeting. To date, one of the key comments we've received is for a paratransit dial ride type of service. This is not something that's new. Similar requests were made during last year's process. However, staff has, well, I have taken proactive steps to explore this feasibility. We were awarded a grant in 2425 to do an update to our short-range transit plan and coordinated public transit plan. So these plans evaluate and address the gaps in our transit service that affect seniors, individuals with disabilities, and others who require more flexible or specialized transit option. We recently completed our request for proposal, and we do have a selected consultant. We will bring this contract to the board at the next meeting on July 1st. If it is approved, we will begin working on these plans closely with the consultants. And the one main focus of this plan is to see what a paratransit dial ride service is going to look like in the county. So it's gonna include a lot of public outreach, stakeholder engagement. And it's going to look at service areas, fair structures, staffing requirements, and cost estimates. Because before we can move forward with implementing this, we have to have all of this addressed to make sure it's sustainable, that the county can keep up. We don't want to implement something for only a few years to get people dependent on it and have it not be sustainable. So doing this plan this fiscal year is very important, and it's going to be able to address the main thing that I've been hearing from the public. But that being said, I want to give an opportunity for any other comments so that we can really analyze the main needs that the community is saying that they require. And like I said, I will be back on the first to present findings and other information. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the board? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this? None in the room, is there any on Zoom?
I show no raised hands.
Thank you. Do we need to make a motion on this, or is this some information?
Just close the hearing.
Okay, we'll close the hearing. We'll close the hearing on E1. We'll now move to county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Is there any requests to change the order of the items? Seeing none, we'll move to F1. Community Development Building waived the reading of and enact an ordinance establishing Trinity County Code Section 15.27 pertaining to movable tiny homes introduced on June 3rd, 2025.
Vice Chair, fellow board members, Cody Smith, Trinity County Building Division Director. Yeah, we're back, tiny homes again. I'm here if you guys have any questions. I know this is a really big one for our community. I've already had a lot of people after the first meeting that are ready to get into this. So if you guys have any questions, let me know.
Are there any questions over the board?
I don't have any questions, but it certainly is of interest. Cody, thanks for sharing that there is enormous interest ready to move.
Is there any public comment in the room? Any online?
I show no hands.
Move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Littwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Heidi Carpenter, Supervisor Carpenter Harris? Aye. We'll move to F2, County Administrative Office. Waive the reading of and enact an ordinance establishing Trinity County Code Section 8.41 pertaining to encampments on public property introduced on June 3, 2025.
Thank you, Chair. I'll take this one. The item before you is in the second reading, and this is the same ordinance that was brought before you on June 3rd. And here to address any questions.
Do we have any questions from the board? None. Public comment in the room? Seeing none, any online?
I show no raised hands.
I will take a motion.
Would move to with the reading of this ordinance and enact Trinity County Code Section 8.41.
I'll second.
Any discussion by the board?
I have no discussion per se. I do just want to acknowledge the great work that went into this. I want to thank the board for, Chair isn't here, but for creating the ad hoc, all of those staff members that have stepped up to the plate for CAO Tuttill's leadership on this and bringing this to what may very well end up being the conclusion of this ad hoc. And I just appreciate the value that this is bringing to our communities.
I do want to share some comments. I received a bit of outreach regarding this after the last meeting. And I have had a chance to share all this with CAO Tuttill and get responses. So I'm more just filling in blanks than raising things that I think we need to change. But the concern was really categorized in a few different ways from the discussions. So there was a concern that this was taking this sort of criminalization approach without alternatives. And, you know, we discussed the fact that actually there are a lot of alternatives. CAO Tuttill just explained that the primary purpose of the visits is to go out and make sure they're aware of services. And even though you can't force those services upon people, you know, try to facilitate that. Lack of meaningful outreach and support. Actually, there's a lot of outreach that goes on, and I've seen that both in one of these site visits as well as outside of that from talking to people. Some concern about legal and fiscal risks, concern over selective and discriminatory enforcement, and then some alternative solutions suggested like proposing investing in shelter alternatives such as tiny home communities, things like that. So again, I think it was all, I think it's always great when you hear from people that are, have a heart for something, and they're trying to weigh in and make sure that those voices are considered. And so I took that in, had a discussion with CAO Tuttill. From his perspective of what the ad hoc committee has done, these things were all acknowledged and addressed. And while this may appear to come up as a one-sided thing, it's because it's filling in a blank that we have to be part of a more holistic approach. And so that's why I still feel very comfortable with what we're doing.
I appreciate you sharing those concerns so that we can talk about them, you know, very publicly like this. In my, in my opinion, as having attended every one of these ad hoc meetings, I, my view is that these concerns would come from just a lack of information to these individuals who've raised the concerns. And so hopefully those concerns have been addressed by you, or if they haven't, we need to find a way to fully inform so that everyone does feel comfortable that staff are very much reaching out with open hands, extending arms, providing ways to get people what it is that they need. And at the same time, we are working to bring comfort to our communities who live on the edge of these impacts to them personally, both of which are very, very important. And if we recall, the meeting that kicked this whole process off back on, I think it was December the 2nd, was very much filled with a room full of people who had been impacted by processes that weren't then in place. Hopefully now are going to find their way into a really positive space and outcome. So if more conversation or information is needed to make these particular people feel comfortable, I certainly would entertain that.
Thank you.
Discussion has been served. We're fine? Okay, we will now call for the vote. Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Littwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris? Aye. Moving to item F3, Board of Supervisors receive a status update on Tourism Development Advisory Board actions and plans.
Okay, I wanted to get back on the agenda, present an update, and I included in the backup materials the materials that would normally have been for our next agenda of the Tourism Advisory Board. And we have not been able to schedule that just due to scheduling conflicts of members of the advisory board so far. So I'm still working on that. But in the meantime, I did take a unilateral action that I will hopefully get full advisory board support for later when we meet to put a pause on the Civitas arrangement. And I did that because we're eating through, you know, five, $6,000 a month. And we were basically going to spend another half of a month while we just waited to have a meeting. And I didn't, just didn't want the money to keep flowing for no benefit. And so Civitas agreed, they just put things on hold. They delivered their final things, which you see as some of the things in the backup materials, bylaws and things like that, that will have to be part of the process, a sample petition, everything. So we now have from Civitas all of the piece parts that we can be sharing with the lodging business owners so that they can weigh in and say, change this, love this, whatever it might be. So that then when we finalize everything, go to petition, it's exactly what, based on the feedback we received, they are telling us they want. Because again, the role of this advisory board was to help package all of that up, to deliver to them, to feed back on, and then hopefully support. That said, one of the reasons for the pause is that we are slow in making progress on this in terms of getting the feedback. And some of that, I would say, is due to efforts of some of the advisory board members. Some of that is due to limitations on contact information. And some of it is due to very purposeful resistance and roadblocks. As I've mentioned before, this is a weighted petition. So my signature as somebody who's one of the top 10 lodging business owners, that's anecdotal and not one of the lodging business owners, would carry much more weight than yours if you had a one-room vacation rental. And at least one of those individuals has actively participated in a number of our meetings, has actively met with individuals on the advisory board, sometimes for more than an hour at a time. And in all of that time, has issued many complaints and concerns and allegations and misunderstandings, and has never offered one recommendation for a change that would cause that person to support it. So it's like, it's, there's no way around something like that. It's just, I'm going to argue, I'm going to complain, I'm gonna conspiracy theory, I'm going to do all these things, but I'll never tell you something that if you change this, I would vote for it. So we may or may not make it through this. We can only probably lose two votes by people in the top 10. And we don't know their order, but we know who's in the top 10. And right now, we have three that are, one's a no, one's probably a no, and the other one is uncertain because of ownership issues. And so we can do all the work we want to with the rest, and it really won't matter. And so right now, my hope is that this advisory board will continue some outreach. I have reached out to individuals that are in that top group to see if we can sway. We've reached out to the Siskiyou Economic Development Community because they have had this very successful program, and they offered that they would put some of their lodging business owners in touch with some of ours who had concerns because it's been so successful there that they think maybe they could convince them if we couldn't. But in the end, this is up to the lodging business owners to decide. And so with this on pause, we can continue to do all the polling, all the outreach that we want at no cost to the county. And, but eventually, we're gonna have to say, are we just stopping and canceling? And then we'll get a little bit of a refund from Civitas advisors, and we won't have spent every dime, but most of it. But we also will have all of the documentation required to make it happen. So we got something for our money regardless. We got much further than the last group did. We have all the bylaws, all the everything. We were just like, make a few tweaks and pull the trigger if we, you know, have the support to do so. I also want to say that when CAO Tuttill was presenting us with options for funding sources in the future, I raised my hand and said, you know, I'm a little concerned that we would potentially go after a TOT increase if we're in the midst of this increase. Because right now, at 5%, there's one county that's lower than us at 4%. Otherwise, we're in that lowest threshold. Add 3%, now we go to 8. Okay, we're still lower than most, but if you added 5 on top of that, now you're at 13. Now we're, we've moved way up in the chart. Not that I'm saying that's a bad thing, I'm just saying I didn't want to sabotage one for the other. That said, what we have done through this investment of time and money is served up on a silver platter to the lodging business owners, a way for them to obtain a minimum of around $200,000 a year to promote tourism that would help them, would help the businesses that also benefit from tourism, and addresses some of the concerns that we've heard before about opposing TOTs and other things because they didn't feel like they had control or that they weren't sure it would be used for tourism. This is by law locked down to be under their control and only for tourism. And so if the outcome of this process is that it's not going to be supported, then I would throw all of my energy and weight behind a TOT increase. And I would say that that money would absolutely not go to tourism. It would go to helping to run the county. We're gonna have budget discussions later. We have financial challenges, and this is a way to address at least some of those challenges with taxes that are not paid by county residents. We may still have to do the other too, but at least this would be an opportunity. And I think we have, in support of the lodging business owners and our businesses who count on tourism, we've invested this $30,000, we've invested our time and energy, and we've delivered this on a silver platter. And if it still just can't get support, then I say, we tried. And now let's go after the money that we need, that we can also get by a vote of the public instead of by the petition of the lodging business owners. And we'll put that money where we need it instead of trying to support them. I just, I don't want this to be the outcome, but I'm frankly quite frustrated that we have such a, I would say, either a self-centered, if it's me saying, I don't want to support this because I don't need more business, but yet you're also fine to just turn away from all the other businesses that will fail because they don't have the tourism that they need. they need, or that I'm so self-centered that because you didn't come bow before me and ask me to do this first, I'm going to oppose it. I just have no tolerance for it. And so I think we've done most everything we can, we'll make this last push, and then I don't think, you know, I'll need to update to the board again until we have a determination that we either crossed the threshold and got a couple of these top tier to come along, and we're going to go ahead with the polling, or that we get to the point of saying, it's not going to happen, let's just call it quits and move on. So that's my update.
Thank you for your continual effort on this.
And thank you for being proactive to sort of stop the flow of money, when it wasn't looking like things were moving productively.
You're welcome.
Do we need to take public comment on this, or it's just an update?
You do have it agendized as an update.
So is there any public comment on this? Being none in the room, any online?
No raised hands.
Okay. This is an update, so there's no motion, correct?
No motion.
All right. I would move that we take a break until 11:40, eight minutes.
Eight minutes. Thank you.
I think this is, okay. Okay.
We're going to move into closed session. I don't know if this should be counted. Close. We're done.
We will now come back to order, visiting our last item under County Matters, F4 County Administrative Office, adopt a resolution which adopts a preliminary budget for FY2526.
Thank you Chair. I will start this off, and Suzie can answer any of the hard questions. So we've taken the exact same approach we took last year with the preliminary budget. So this is a statutory requirement that we have to adopt a budget, you know, a preliminary budget prior to one July. So no later than close business 30 June, we have to have a preliminary budget adopted. You know, you are all aware of the state budget, our, you know, Graham through CSAC, you know, mentioned some stuff today as far as the process they've gone through, and some of the continual unknowns with that. So we do have some unknowns in our budget process, and that's why this is just a preliminary adoption. So as we did last year, the proposal in front of you is to adopt, or to provide authority to staff to continue operations, you know, up to 40% of what we anticipate the overall final budget to be, with a few other upfront known expenditures that we have typically that are paid very, at the very beginning of any particular fiscal year. There are some big on-time expenses that we choose to pay, so we don't have any additional fees or costs associated with those if we spread it out over the entire fiscal year. So those are all included in this preliminary budget adoption. As you see in the staff report, there is an approximate $3 million gap between what departments have submitted and what we anticipate our revenue will be to balance the budget. That is a large gap, and we will have, you know, some hard work in front of us to work through that. But if you recall, it is smaller than the previous year's gap. So I am optimistic and hopeful and confident that we will be able to close that gap. That gap is smaller, because some of the actions, you know, this board, prior board took, and some operational realities that, you know, your staff has been going through. So, you know, some of those actions we took last year, you know, we're seeing those quote savings in this budget cycle. So I'm happy to see some of those, but like I said, we still do have a gap to close, and we will work through that process prior to the beginning of October, and adequately work through that. The level of services that we are going to be able to provide, you know, your county leadership team would certainly like to provide a higher levels of service across the board. But we also operate in the revenue realities that we're in, and, you know, we are going to provide the highest levels of services we can, based upon those available revenue streams that we do have. As the state budget activities and areas become more known and specific, and assuming they, you know, adopt that budget that they're going to adopt by the end of the month, that will help us also turn some of those unknowns right now into knowns, as we continue the planning cycle for our balanced budget. So that will be helpful as those programs become clearer in the not-so-distant future. My plan is also to use the strategic plan priorities that the board has also set and sustained, you know, keeping public safety as our highest priority in mind as we look to balance budget across the board. We have department budget meetings scheduled later in July, where we will dive into all the excruciating detail with the departments, and walk through the budget submittals, line item by line item, and make sure, you know, that all those expenditures that they have identified, and all the revenues that they have identified are appropriate. And then following that, you know, in early September, the proposed budget will be released, and then later in September, you know, we'll have the full budget hearings in this room, and we'll finalize that budget submission no later than the 2nd of October, as required by the County Budget Act. So that's kind of the process we've gone through so far, the current status that we're in, and what we're going to be working through over the next few months to provide you an opportunity to adopt a budget, a balanced budget, and also, you know, for the public to provide any comments and input as we go through this process, that they're willing to do. With that, I'll pause for any other questions, and then we can move forward.
Do we have any questions from the board? None at this time? Any public comment in the room? Being none, any public comment online?
We have no raised hands.
Thank you. Hear a motion from the board?
I would move to adopt, this resolution is presented.
I will second. Any discussion?
I just want to acknowledge that, as C O Tuttle did, that we have this smaller gap, it's still a big gap, but a smaller gap in part because of the proactive actions taken, supported by the board through our vote, but also just taken by staff. And so I appreciate the leadership to try to move us in a direction that reflects a more feasible way to balance our budget. It's not easy, and I appreciate that the staff is going through a tough time to try to figure out, how do they not meet their own high standards for what they do on behalf of the county?
Hold that thought for one second, please.
So just wanting to offer that gratitude and acknowledgement, that while we'd still have challenges ahead of us, this was less painful because of the work being done by our department heads and C O.
Agreed.
Very true.
Yep.
We have closed discussion, move for the vote.
Supervisor Carpenter-Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutweller?
Aye.
We will now move into closed session, and we'll do a report out from last meeting's closed session on item E1, Government Code Section 54954.5F, Labor Negotiations, County Designated Representative Lila Casseis and Elizabeth Hamilton, Employee Organization IHSS, we gave direction to staff. And on item E2, Government Code Section 54956.95, Liability Claim, Claimant Seth Reese, Claim Number TIBY600219, was continued. We will now adjourn the open public meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors on June 17th, and move into our closed session. Thank you.